Got my gavel again. Call to order, the July 6, 2021 meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Gene, since we're, actually, I guess I'll read this, right? Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. This meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted both in person at the meeting location listed above, which is the North Andover Town Hall, and via remote participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, online at www.northandovercam.org. In-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, a transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public would like to participate in any public hearings, of which we have one tonight for 325 Johnson Street. You can do so at the hearing here at Town Hall. If you cannot attend or wish to participate remotely, you may email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our Planning Director Gene Enright at J E N R I G H T at northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Since we're partial remote, partial in-person, Gene, could we take attendance?
Kelly Comier.
Here.
Alyssa Konig.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Goldberg.
I am here.
And Peter Boynton is not here this evening.
Okay, and so I would welcome Alyssa, her first meeting here as a new board member. Erin and Kate had their last meetings at Town Meeting, and so Alyssa has joined us, which is great, and I think we still have one associate spot left.
The associate spot, yes.
So if anyone's interested, get in contact with the Planning Director, or the Town Manager, or one of us, because we could use someone just in a situation like today when a member's not available. Okay, so let's start at the top. 633 Turnpike Street, Mike Riley, Andover Pest Control. Request for release of a $2,000 performance bond associated with a site plan review special permit approved in March 2020 that allowed for a paved wraparound driveway for parking stalls and stormwater improvements. So Gene, what can you tell us about this bond release?
So this is a former residential building that was converted to Andover Pest Control Office Building. The site was constructed according to the plans. The Conservation Commission has already issued a certificate of completion, and the recorded decision, the ASBIL plan, the site photos, and the engineer certification letter are all included in your packet.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to release the remaining bond on 633 Turnpike Street.
Okay, can we get a second?
A second.
Second, Alyssa. So since we're partial remote, we'll do a roll call vote. Kelly, I think we'll just start all votes with you, just as the remote person, just to make it easier, and then we'll go down the line. So Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. That motion is approved, bond released in the amount of $2,000. All right. 127 Marblehead Street, Pat Cohn, Seaport Homes, request for release of a $2,000 performance bond associated with a site plan review special permit approved in March 2020 that allowed for conversion of an existing building into a four-unit multifamily. All right, Gene, so this was the Franny's property?
This is the former Franny's building that went through Town Meeting to have a zoning change to allow for construction of the four units, they're condo units. The site was constructed substantially in accordance with the approved plans, pictures, the recorded decision, the ASBIL plan, and the engineer certification letter are also all included in your packet.
Have there been any, have you heard any comments, concerns about parking? I think that was the biggest concern of neighbors was the parking situation.
I have not.
Okay.
So the parking is constructed according to the plan.
Great. All right, John, make a motion.
With that in mind, I'll make a motion to release the remaining bond for 127 Marblehead Street.
All right.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. That one's released as well. All right, 1600 Osgood Street, Netts, N E T T T S. Don Harris, request for release of a $5,000 performance bond associated with a site plan review special permit approved in September 2016 that allowed for the relocation of the N E T T T S driver's training course to existing parking areas to the south and north of the main building. This one's before I was on the board, Gene.
Yes, so Don may remember this.
Yeah, I remember this. Isn't this moot now?
It's absolutely moot. We actually, proactively, went to them and said, "You still have the bond with us."
You want your money back.
So they've left 1600 Osgood a couple of years ago in advance of Amazon being permitted. So they're operating in April now. But they did go through the whole thing. We have the engineer certification letter, the ASBIL plan. They did everything they were required to do prior to leaving.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to release the remaining bond for 1600 Osgood Street Nets.
I second.
All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. They can have their money that they didn't know they had back.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, ooh, yeah, you can go through your comp packet and find a 10 bucks.
Right?
There's a little more than that, though.
What else?
Yeah, okay. New public hearing, 325 Johnson Street, Kevin and Allison Sparks, watershed special permit applications request approval to construct a detached garage, expand the gravel driveway to access said new garage, install dry well to capture roof runoff of said new garage, pump crush and fill with sand oil septic tank cesspool, connect to town sewer, and connect to gas. Work is proposed within the 100-foot non-disturbance zone and within the 100 feet of the wetlands. All right, Gene, you want to tell us what we're looking at, and then we can hear from the applicant?
Yep, so the good news here is they are abandoning the septic and connecting to town sewer. The project will require approvals by the Conservation Commission, ZBA for a new permanent structure within the non-disturbance buffer zone and this board. The ZBA hearing will not open until August. A significant portion of the parcel is located within the non-disturbance buffer zone, and the proposed garage is located within this buffer zone as well. So it's within 100 feet of a wetland within the watershed. The agenda obviously provides a good description of what is being proposed. Department review comments have been received from the Police Department, Conservation, and Health Department. The stormwater peer reviewer has submitted review comments, however, the applicant is waiting for the first opening hearing prior to responding to that. So hopefully Jack Sullivan has joined the meeting.
Yep, I'm here, Gene.
There you go. So Jack, if you don't mind, if you could, I have the plan up, I'll zoom into that.
Can you remind me exactly where on Johnson Street this is?
It's just about the top of the hill, a little bit further.
As you're going up the hill, the left and the right?
On the right-hand side.
Okay.
Okay, Jack, so if you could describe the non-disturbance buffer zone and the remaining area, which is the non-discharge, there's not much land left in the non-discharge, and it
That's right.
And it appears the water and sewer line will be on that, however, the full garage buildout would be in the non-disturbance.
That's correct. So for the record, my name's Jack Sullivan, I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. I think Gene did a good job kind of recapping this project. But I just want, my clients, Kevin and Allison Sparks, they've lived at this property for about 30 years, and at this point, they'd like to put in a detached garage. There's seven trees greater than six inches in diameter that will come down within the 100-foot non-disturbance zone. Just so the board knows, this lot was created in 1989, so it predates the bylaw, so they're under regulations prior to, I think, 1994. And they're looking to put in the detached garage, they want to extend the gravel driveway to service this garage. We're going to capture the roof runoff from the garage in a dry well, and that dry well's been sized for the 100-year storm event. And as Gene stated, there's an existing cesspool on the property that will be pumped, they'll connect to town storage, and they want to connect to gas service.
Gas.
And
Oh dear.
There we go. I see the plane in the upper-left corner. What we try to do is we try to run the sewer service and the gas service. I've located all trees greater than six inches in diameter within the work area, and we've tried to make it so that there'll be as little impact as possible to the trees. That's basically it. As Gene stated, we do have to go to the zoning board of appeals. It's an accessory structure. When I read the definition under the zoning bylaw, I didn't think we needed to go to ZBA. Talked with the building inspector, he thought we didn't need to go, but then in talking with Gene and then following up with the building inspector, it was agreed that we'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals. So I'm not looking to close this hearing tonight, I just wanted to open, give an overview. I'm going to respond to the peer review comments, which were pretty minor, and I was fine with the peer review, I had no issues, I'll satisfy all the requirements. And then I just wanted to make sure that they get the approval from the zoning board prior to making the changes and coming back before the planning board.
Okay, so that was my question. So then we should continue this hearing, but not to the July 20 meeting, to whatever meeting is after the ZBA?
Correct.
So the ZBA meets the second Tuesday in August, and we would meet, I think, on the 17th, right? Yeah, it's going to be important to get a read from them prior to drafting a decision.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, because it's a discretionary decision on their part, not like a pro-formal one, I think we have to wait.
Yeah, so August 17th is our next hearing.
So we'll continue it to August 17th, but I'd say still go through everything that you can with Gene in terms of responding to peer review comments, getting any other department comments if there are. Let's get all our ducks in a row, so that if ZBA approves, then we can move on. If it gets changed, then we can always slow things down.
So I'll know a week out and potentially can draft a decision for the next hearing?
Okay.
Just a few questions, and Jack, probably you're the first person to ask, is how big is this garage? Is it, does it have like a second floor to it, the top, over it?
Nope, there's no second story to it. And as you can see, we're not running utilities to this garage. It's just really just for car storage. So it's a 24-by, 24-by 30, single-story garage.
Okay, good. That was the big question I wanted to ask, and you're going to like gutter it and manage the runoff and do all the things you normally do, right?
That's right, yep. I show roof drain, there'll be gutters, I show the roof drains on the garage, and everything will be hard piped to the dry well.
Yeah.
And it's currently a gravel driveway, which I'll just extend with the same materials?
Yep, since we're within 100 feet of the wetlands, they wanted to pave it, but they're very close to the wetland line with the existing driveway. I said, "Let's just stay with gravel." I've already been before the Conservation Commission as well. We're doing the same process we're doing with the planning board. We opened, we had a good discussion, and then we're continuing with them until their meeting in August as well.
Gene, just curious, how many houses right in that area are still in septic?
I don't know. I don't know. I can find out for the next hearing.
I'm just curious. I mean, I know there's stragglers here and there, and it's actually shocking in some cases, but I, not that urgent, but if you do know the number, I'm just curious.
I'll find out. There's just not many in the watershed in general left, so I was surprised to see this.
Yeah, it's good. I mean, that's a compelling reason in itself to do that, so.
Okay, all right, so anything else we need to tackle, Gene?
No.
Okay, all right, so continued until August 17.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Gene. Bye-bye.
Yep, goodnight, Jack.
All right. Planning Board election of officers, we can just go into that?
Well, I made a motion to nominate you for chair again.
Thanks, Jack. I appreciate it. We need a vice chair, so I would nominate John to be our vice chair. If you're good with that?
Yeah, okay.
All right. Kelly, thoughts?
That sounds fantastic.
Alyssa?
I agree.
All right, we're good with that, because Peter, Erin was our vice chair, so we needed a new vice chair.
Do you want to just take a motion on that?
All right, so can we get a motion to nominate me to be the chair for the next year and John to be the vice chair? With the expanded extra salaries that those come with?
Yes, right.
Kelly?
I motion for Aton to continue as chair and John to take over as vice chair for the upcoming year.
All right, we need a second?
I second.
All right, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. After Town Meeting, I got the selectmen to agree to double our salary for next year?
And overtime work.
And overtime.
Nice.
Yeah, zeros across the board. So, good job, everyone. Okay, why don't we do the meeting minutes, and then we, well, yeah, why don't we do the meeting minutes? Can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 1st, 8th, and 17th?
So moved.
Okay, Kelly, can you second that?
Second.
We'll just have Kelly, John, and I vote, since we were the ones at the meeting. Kelly?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Royal Crest Estates, 128 Royal Crest Drive, Trinity Financial, proposed master redevelopment plan for the property. Tonight, our plan is to review the updated master development plan. We're going to get some progress updates. I think we'll actually talk about the working group, actually, I think we'll do that first, talk about the working group first. And then, I think I just want to kind of run through just a general idea of what we're going to be doing over the next few months to move this towards whatever finale it's going to come to, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so why don't you introduce yourself, and then we'll jump in.
Sure, so I am Michael Lozano, for those who don't know me, Michael Lozano, Vice President of Development with Trinity Financial.
Okay, so for those who don't know, if anyone's tuning in for the first time, or just getting, just as a summary, one of the things that we've been doing with Royal Crest is, as we've talked about all of the different issues related to the potential project here at the planning board.
Sorry, when I share my screen for here, that's what I'm getting. I'm going to close things down and start again.
Are we good? Can I, okay. Can everyone hear me still?
You're feeding back, Gene, you're going to shut down, you're going to stop while sharing the desktop. There we go.
Okay, so we're going to try again. So as we've been having the discussions regarding the proposal here at the planning board, in tandem, we've had a working group, which has members of the planning board, a member of the select board, town department's staff, from several of the engineers and staff from the developers, meeting to discuss kind of more the inner workings of if this proposal were to go forward, how would actual zoning work, and getting into the nitty-gritty of that, which really isn't very conducive for these meetings. Eventually, we'll get to discussing those things at public meetings and public hearings, but kind of drilling down on those kind of finite details is hard to do in this type of session. So it's been John Simons, as well as Aaron Preston was on that, so Aaron is no longer on the board, so it would be my intention to probably take his spot, just being most familiar with the project, to jump into that working group. And so we'll do that. When's our next, when's the next kind of working group? Do we have a kind of set date for that, or a plan?
I think we're looking to regroup, and we wanted to get through sort of the adjustments, right sizing of the plan, and then we're going to regroup with the working group.
Okay.
And set those going forward, probably next week.
Okay, so I think the next kind of steps are to jump back into the working group, really using these new plans, drill into some of the zoning, and then as well as like a real definite calendar of what information needs to be developed and presented before we can take a vote here and send anything to any type of town meeting. Because I think now that we have kind of an updated master plan, the real specifics, because if we're going to do a master development plan and present that to Town Meeting, we need to have all the finite pinpoint details as much as possible. And I think it's been a lot of good discussion at a high level, and we need to get that, you know, a schedule for that, because if we're going to have, I want to really lay it out, so if we're going to get to a Town Meeting at X date, then we need to have this on this date, and this on this date, and this on this date, and if we meet those goals, then great. If we don't, then I, you know, we're not going to be comfortable moving it forward.
Understood.
So that's what I'd like to kind of get out of this next kind of working group time, okay?
Agreed.
So Mike, why don't you tell us kind of where we are with the master, kind of updated master plan, how things are, what the kind of the current state of the proposal is?
Sure.
We can ask questions and make comments, and then we can give a progress update, and then talk about some of the things that we're kind of looking forward to getting more details on.
Okay, that sounds good. So as you recall, last month, we had revised the program, right-sized it, if you will, with input from many different parties, from the select board, from the planning board, obviously. So we had started with the program, and now our design team has been
I'm sorry, excuse me, it's very hard to hear, Michael, it's very soft.
If I speak into the microphone, is that better?
Please do.
Yippee?
It's still really soft. I mean, is anyone else having the same problem? It's just hard to hear.
So I'll try to speak up, if that's a little bit better? So we started with the program, and we spent the last several weeks translating the program into the master plan itself. So we wanted to set the buildings correctly, but at the same time, we also wanted to address all of the comments that we've heard related to the plan. At this point, our design team is now sort of extruding the plan, if you will, to 3D. They're actually designing the buildings. So the next step after this one is we want to come back to you and show you what these buildings are going to actually look like. So we're going to go over the plan today, sort of a progress report of the plan, and then we're expecting on August 17 to come back to you with a full set of architectural renderings, a 3D model with a fly-through, if you will, elevations, any sort of perspective that people want to see, to see how this, you know, how people will actually experience this site, either if you live there, if you're walking through there, or if you live adjacent to it. We'll have all of that stuff next month. So we want, we've heard loud and clear that people want to make sure that this will fit into North Andover, and we're confident that will, but we got to show you. So that's what we're working on now. So today, we wanted to give you a progress update on the plan itself, so we put together a presentation to remind everybody where we were, what our original plan was, what we had heard, and how we responded to that in the new plan. So Gene, if you do have the presentation, we can go through that. So I'll just briefly go through this, I'm not going to, you know, read every word on this, but we did want to put things into context, so people understand, again, where we were, the process we went through, and how we responded to that. But just a reminder, so far, we've had over 80 meetings with more than, you know, essentially 4,000 people. We've communicated with more than 4,000 people. We've had 80 actual meetings. Some of those meetings were with one person, one of the meetings was with over 100 people. So we've had, we've had lots of meetings. There's been a significant process that we went through, and we've been listening. We've heard many thoughts and comments about the plan, both good and bad. Generally, people agree that the property is outdated, they understand that it's tired, that it's inefficient, and it needs to be replaced. People like the idea of a walkable community, a variety of housing types, including affordable housing, some new open space and parkland, and modern, energy-efficient, and environmentally sustainable buildings, something that's not there today. Concerns we heard were generally about property line access, people currently crossing property lines, screening and buffering, those are very big and significant things that we've talked a lot about. Proximity of our proposed walking path to the property line at certain locations, which I'll get into, operation and orientation of the student housing building, which we heard a lot about, and we think we've addressed. Drainage and stormwater retention, that was a big one, and something that we are working hard to address, and I'll get into that a little bit, but that's something that we're going to be doing going forward. Density, of course, which we think we've addressed through the program revisions, but we'll talk about that, and building heights. Some of the other things that we've heard are about setbacks, for example, on 114 and in other locations. So we heard that loud and clear. The design team has really spent a lot of time sort of studying, looking at the existing condition, plus our proposed condition, and we'll show you some of that stuff today. So the next page is a reminder, this was where we started. So this was the original plan that we introduced to the board some months ago, and this is where we started, and I'll get into where we are today. So the next page, Gene? So this is our new plan. It's got a lot of the elements that we really liked from the original plan, it's got the essence of the original plan, which we really liked, but there are a lot of revisions here. And I think, and are hopeful that people will like these revisions, but we've spent a lot of time, again, going through all of those things that we've heard, and trying to respond to each and every one of those. So this is an overview, it's a little hard to go through everything with the whole thing, so we broke it down into sort of sectors, so we can start to see some of the revisions that we're talking about. Likewise, our landscape team, our landscape design team, has really started to ramp up and look specifically both at the plan overall, and a reminder that this is over 77 acres, so it's an enormous site. But to look at the entire site, but to also start to look at the individual public spaces, public realm within the site, and how people will interact with it, whether you're in a car, or you're walking, or you're on a bike, if you live in these buildings, or you're just visiting, they've spent a lot of time to sort of understand how people will interact with the buildings and the different spaces, and started to design that. So we hadn't had that before, we're starting to do that now. Stormwater and infrastructure, we've talked a lot about that, so we're now advancing that design. And they, you know, everything sort of goes together. So, you know, as we've talked about a lot, the infrastructure at the existing Royal Crest is very outdated, it was insufficient to begin with 50 years ago, it's certainly insufficient today. Now that we have this opportunity to start again, we are going to take that opportunity, and what this project really gives us is the ability to start from below the ground and to rebuild everything, and to fix the problems that have been there, and make sure that they're all accounted for going forward. So one of the big things has been stormwater and drainage. And our engineering team is, you know, has been going through a lot of effort to ensure that there will be no impact from our site on any of the neighboring areas. But beyond that, you know, we wanted to, you know, take this a little bit further and see what we could do. We have all these public spaces that we have to design, and that we have to utilize. We have a lot of wetlands that we have to preserve, and in some cases, we have to expand. So our team has been working to figure out how to do that best, and so we've got, you know, our landscape team and our engineering team working together to accommodate the stormwater and the drainage infrastructure. One of the big things that's come up recently is, you know, to integrate rain gardens within the streetscape, which are really nice features. They look really nice, but they also provide some really significant stormwater management capability. So that's starting to be integrated into our plan now. Our team is putting together a package that will go to both you and to the Conservation Commission and be peer reviewed. So we've started that process now with, working with the town to engage a peer reviewer and to put that package together, so that it can be reviewed by your engineer.
To clarify, it won't be a full-blown stormwater report, but it'll be what they're presenting as the methodology and design, to try to get just a nod that, you know, the peer reviewers can at least come to the conclusion that it makes sense at this point. The full-blown peer review would not be until after Town Meeting, assuming that this project moves forward during the review process.
So that would be part, so that would be something that even with the master plan proposal, that a stormwater review, a stormwater special permit of some sort would need to be issued?
Yes, because there's just state regulations in our local bylaw that they need to comply with, and so.
And those are things we can discuss in the working group, and, you know, it would go with the proposed.
Well, it's just one of those things that I think John did maybe mention it, maybe a previous meeting about trying to really figure out which things come back to the board and which things are, once you go to Town Meeting, are kind of done, so.
That's right.
It's, even if we do them individually and just kind of check these things off the bucket, so we know stormwater is coming back to the board for a special permit, so we can just put that in that bucket of something that's coming back, check that off, and when we go down these other items, you know, that's just why I wanted to make note of it now.
And I guess it's just a clarification.
And I guess it's just a clarification of whether it's a special permit or site plan review, or which will work out.
Right, that's fine.
But yes, certainly, that is one of the things that will definitely come back before the board for each of the individual projects as we proceed. So, the next, the next page, these are just images, so you can see, you know, this is the type of landscape element that we're talking about. This is infrastructure. This is stormwater management, but, you know, we have to do it anyway. Beyond this, there's going to be a lot of underground stormwater storage, which doesn't exist there today. So, most of the stuff, we're not going to have exposed sort of surface retention ponds, as you sometimes see. Everything will either be in an expanded wetland, or it will be underground in underground storage infrastructure, or it'll be accommodated through these sort of rain garden type of methods. But all of that's being integrated, and will all be significantly more, both significantly more than is there today, but it will be more than is required under your bylaw or by state regulations. So, getting into the plan itself, so this is just a reminder of, this is sort of the townhouse zone closest to the abutting neighborhoods. So, the original plan, we wanted to maintain a wide landscaped buffer. We're still doing that. The townhouses were more in context with the surrounding single-family neighborhood, so that was something that we really liked. And there was extensive drainage and stormwater management, so it's built into our original plan, but we've taken that a step further. So, in the revised plan, like I mentioned, we had heard from a lot of people that they were really concerned about people crossing from the Royal Crest property onto their property or through their property. We heard that loud and clear. So, we're working through ways to control that access. We also heard that people really like the woods. They like the existing trees. So, we don't want to cut down existing trees just to put up fencing. So, we're looking at ways to integrate both fencing that will keep people from crossing, but also keeping as many of the existing trees as possible, and to make that fencing as unobtrusive as possible. We reduced the total number of townhouse units by 63. So, now, this plan has 200 that are all side-by-side, single-family-style townhouse units. There are no duplex units in this plan anymore. The previous plan had duplex units.
I don't mean to interrupt, but can you clarify, so when you're showing the difference on the buffer zone from 170 feet increase from 126, the 126 was the proposed increase before?
That's right. So, the 126 was our proposed buffer. It's actually less than that today. So, it's around 90, 80 to 90 feet today to existing buildings. Our previous plan was at 126 feet. This plan is at 170 feet.
So, one thing I would like, and we can kind of talk about this maybe at the end, but it's something, you know how we have the program summary?
Yes.
So, something like that. I think these drawings are really good and actually very helpful to have, but I think we also need the data in a separate chart. So, from each building, you know, or sets of buildings, the setback, what it is now, what was in the original proposal, and what's the current proposal, because I think that's important. Because it doesn't say, right, what does 126 mean if it was 180 now?
Yeah.
126 isn't great. If it was 90 now, and it's going to be 126, then it's actually going to be 170, you know?
Got it.
So, you're basically almost doubling the buffer. That's really good. But I want, I'd like that for each building, as you go through, you know, what's the set, what's the current setback? What's the proposed in the original plan? What's the now setback in the current? Same with building heights, right? So, here you say reduce heights of buildings, T, H, A, and C from four to three. On that, on this chart, on this master summary chart, or on a different one, current height of the building that's there, or a comparable, you know, what's in that area, what was originally proposed, and what is now the proposal, both in stories and actual, you know, 55 feet, 65, whatever feet it is, we can have a chart that shows that for each building. Again, those, the diagrams are great. The visuals, we'll need those too, but we need the data.
Got it.
Some of us are better with data. Some of us are better with visuals, and I think that goes for the town in general.
Understood.
Just one point of clarification. These are townhouses that share walls, right?
That is correct.
So, I guess when you said duplexes, I said, well, I usually think of a duplex as two houses side-by-side with a common wall. So, they're actually triplexes, aren't they?
So, if you're using that terminology, yes. These are attached, single-family townhouses. In our previous plan, in the center of this zone of the site, we had townhouses that were stacked. So, their first and second floor would be one townhouse, and there was a third and fourth floor.
Okay, fair enough.
That's what I was referring to as the duplex units, which some, you know, some communities have those. We've eliminated those. We think it's more appropriate in this zone to have just single-family attached townhouses.
So, they're each three stories, and they're just, how many are in a cluster?
In most cases, it's three. In some cases, it's two, but generally, it's, there's one, there's one location where there's four.
Okay.
So, but reducing the density here, reducing those 63 units, allowed us to make for a better plan and better, what we feel is a better plan, better use of the land, and to increase that buffer from the property line to our new buildings.
And just remind me again, are those owned or rented?
They're expected to be owned.
And so, if they're owned individually, is there some sort of conduization?
Yes.
Now, is it like for all of them, or am I in a condo with the two others next to me? If we need a new roof, or if, what if the one down the street needs a new roof? Is it all together, or are they separate?
It's expected that they would be separate. There would be a single condo association. Each owner would own their own unit within the condo association.
Oh, the condo association is three, not 60?
Well, the condo association likely would be larger than three. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a three-unit association.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, if it's a three-unit or if it's all of the units?
It's all of it. It's all.
Yeah, you would have to do a lot of them, because how are you going to get your streets cleaned and...
Yes.
But the interesting thing is, if my roof, if do I, if, you know, in a condo, right? If your roof goes, and there are three of you, and it's contexted, three of you fix your roof. But now, am I fixing the roof of the guy down the street? I mean, they're all probably going to be at the same time, but it's just an interesting concept.
Yeah, it's an interesting, and I know people went through that, so, yeah.
So, I mean, there are pros and cons to both, you know? It's better to spread out the cost amongst 60.
I mean, you, for all I know, you could have a hybrid of both.
Right, yeah, I was just curious, yeah.
And those are, those are probably details that we would likely figure out a little bit closer.
Yeah, it's not necessarily essential to the plan. I'm just, I was just more curious.
Yeah, exactly. I should note as well that on the, on, or calling in on the call is Jeff Keteritz from VHB, who is our engineer, and Beth Niemi from Elkes Manfredi Architects, who is one of our architects. So, they're taking notes as well, so we can make sure that we can follow up. But they're available for dimensional or specific questions if we have them. One of the other, if you recall, in the previous plan, the clubhouse building for this community of townhouses was on the perimeter of the site, close to Berkeley Road. And we heard that there was a lot of desire amongst that neighborhood to move that into the interior of the site, which we did. So, we cut that facility down in half. We felt it didn't need to be as big. We wanted to make it less obtrusive, and we also moved it to the interior of the site as a response to the neighbors.
How does that compare with, there's like a clubhouse leasing office there now?
It's roughly equivalent to that, yeah. So, it would have common amenities for this part of the site. And each of the other buildings, which I'll get into, will have their own amenities or self-contained within the buildings. So, people will have those amenities closer by to them and more in market, like you see in market developments today. But I can get into those details.
Okay.
We, again, like we talked about, we increased the width of the landscape buffer by well over 50% on average. We enhanced the wetland area, areas, and we provided additional below-grade stormwater storage. We've moved, we heard a lot about the walking path, and we spent a lot of time with people. There was a lot of concerns about what this was, and people had concerns that it was like a rail trail, and that it was much more significant than we're talking about here. We still think it's going to be a really great amenity, both for people who will live at Royal Crest or people who are visiting. It'll be a nearly two-mile-long trail that will connect to other infrastructure that's being built in the vicinity, but we wanted to make sure that it's not impactful to the neighbors. So, we pulled the walking path away from the perimeter of the site, away from the property line in this area, to, again, to maintain that buffer and make sure that people have privacy in their backyards. The walking path is, you know, on average, at least 150 feet away from the property line. We, in this part of the site, we reduced the height of buildings, like I mentioned, the central townhouse buildings from four to three stories, and we also reduced Building C1 in height from four to three stories. We also reconfigured that building to have a smaller footprint, so it gives us some more open space. So, if you can go to the next one, Gene? So, this is the eastern part of the site, further down Route 114 towards Stop and Shop. So, a reminder, again, here, we wanted to maintain a wide landscaped buffer at the rear of the site in particular, as it sort of interfaces the hillside neighborhood. There's extensive drainage and stormwater management here. If you recall, drainage flows from over 50 acres uphill from us onto our site, from hillside onto our site. So, there's a lot of stormwater management, management and wetland preservation in this area. And we focused the larger buildings on Route 114 and closer to Merrimack College.
So, the H buildings are offices, is that right?
That's correct.
And the F, G, E, D are all apartments?
Yes, that's correct. So, we spent a lot of time here. A reminder from our last meeting, we reduced the multifamily and the age-restricted units throughout the site by 269. So, a big reduction there. We reduced the height of Building G1, which is the building closest to the neighborhood. That was five stories. We reduced that to four stories and very significantly reduced its footprint. So, it's much further away from the property line and those neighbors. That does a couple of things. It allows us more open space. It allows us more land to enhance the wetlands. Gives us more land to do stormwater management, and, you know, again, moves the buildings as far away from the neighborhood as possible.
Two leading questions. Is H2 a building or parking lot?
It is a parking garage.
Okay. Was that always where that was?
Yes. In the very original plan, it was connected to that building in a very early revision. It was moved into a separate structure in order to accommodate the connection that you see here to the adjacent properties.
That was the second question. Is this entryway into the adjacent property? Can you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so, we've heard for a very long time from many places that there's been a desire to provide connections, sort of east-west, that's not necessarily on Route 114. We also heard a lot of, a lot from our neighbors about access once Mass DOT does their work on Route 114. So, we want to be good neighbors. We've been engaged with the neighbors in order to provide access onto our property if it is something that they and we want. We've been engaged in those discussions. We're happy and want to, again, happy and want to be good neighbors to our commercial neighbors to the east.
But this is not a done deal by these structures.
It is not. It is not.
So, a question on the buildings, D2, F2, F1, and H1, the ones right on 114. Is the setback the same as the previous plan?
It is not. It is not. So, I'll get, I'll get to that. And I've got another sort of more zoomed-in image a little bit later that I can talk to that as well.
So, is it more or less?
It's more. It's more. But I'll get into the specifics of it and what we did there.
Mike, if I can just add, so in addition to this vehicle connection that they're proposing, as Mike said, it hasn't been fully resolved. However, we did meet with Peter Shaheen, who's the owner of Crossroads Plaza, and his property starts to the rear of the one that's being connected to. And he did have an appetite for pedestrian-type connection, not necessarily vehicle, but I don't think the pedestrian show is right here, but that would be helpful too, and he didn't seem to...
And we're open to that as well.
...to mind a pedestrian connection.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, maybe one-way vehicle traffic. I don't know about two-way vehicle traffic, but we can, we can, that can come later. I had a question. In between F2 and F1, that's parking?
That's correct, yes.
Is that above-ground parking or below-ground?
That is structured parking within the building. So, it's embedded within the building. You won't really tell, you wouldn't be able to tell that it's a parking garage, but it is a parking garage within the building.
Within the building, okay.
Yes.
Is there a consistent number of floors for these parking garages, or does it vary?
There are typically five floors, but they are lower floor-to-ceiling heights than the residential, so they are lower. They're not as tall as the surrounding buildings. But we'll show you that. Once we do the architecture, you'll be able to see how they interact.
And all floors above grade?
All floors above grade. That's right.
But the idea is you can, if you live on the fourth floor, you can drive up and park by the
That's right.
fourth floor and walk into your basement.
Exactly right. Exactly right. So, one of the, so I'll get into the setback question here and what we've done to, to address that. So, if you recall, these, in the previous version, these buildings were one building. They were one very large building. We've actually separated them now. So, F1 and F2 are separate buildings connected, but they have a pedestrian walkway between them. At the scale of these plans, it doesn't look like much, but in reality, it's a pretty significant separation between F1, the parking garage, and F2. We also pushed the parking garage back so that the setback is significantly increased in that location. We wanted to, so we spent a lot of time, we absolutely heard the comments about the setback on 114, that this is a gateway, that it's very important that these buildings serve as a gateway to North Andover, that they look good. So, our team spent a lot of time, you know, studying the existing setbacks, the existing conditions between the roadway, and, you know, the existing site, the existing trees in particular, where we're proposing to put these buildings, and have come up with this configuration. So, what this does is it starts to break down the massing of those buildings into separate components. By pushing the parking garage portion of it back, it, again, sort of reinforces that, and it allows us to preserve some of the existing trees, which, if you recall, are between 80 and 100 feet tall in those locations. And then, our landscape architect has spent a lot of time to sort of design that area between 114 and the buildings, so it's something actually quite inviting, unlike today. So, the setback, if we go to the, if we zoom forward a little bit, and that may, we can come back. The, it's page 18, Gene. So, one, one more, right there, right there, at the bottom. Up one...
Up one slide?
Up one slide, yeah. So, this is a sketch our landscape architect did, so, and if you zoom in there. So, the setbacks to the building face is 44 feet from the curb line of the proposed Route 114 and the face, the closest face of the building. So, it's 44 feet. It's pretty significant. We pushed the garage back, so it's 65 feet in that location.
So, what was it before? I'm sorry. So, D1, so, for example, what was D1 before? 44 now?
So, it was, it was 44 feet consistently across the whole face. Now, it's 44 feet, and the middle section of it is 65 feet. So, it got pushed back 21 more feet.
So, the buildings are still where they were. It's just the garage put back?
That's correct.
But maybe I'm totally misreading. That piece in gray is between D1 and D2 is the parking?
That's correct.
But it's closer to the street?
No, no. It's further back.
But what am I missing? Honestly?
The buildings are the same distance back. The buildings did not move back.
The buildings are the same, but the parking looks like it's closer to the street. The buildings are the same, but the parking looks like it's closer to the street.
Eh.
Which-
Next are twenty feet back, I think.
So the street is where it says existing trees to remain? Just reading those words, that's Route 114?
Yeah, I know that, but my, my point is that the parking thing that's between them is closer to the street than the two buildings.
I don't think so.
What? What am I looking at? What am I looking at wrong?
John, so this is the street? The parking structure is further that way than the building?
Yes. Yes.
The arms things of the building?
But this is closer to the street.
That's a sidewalk. That's a new sidewalk. That's a new sidewalk.
Is this the edge of the, uh?
That's the edge of the parking garage.
Yeah, there's the edge of the, so there's, this is the distance between the parking garage and the edge of the building.
That's right.
Building is here.
Yeah. The only, yeah, just the parking garages moved back. All the buildings are still just as close.
Yes.
Oh, I just think that these were the buildings.
Yeah, this is the corner of the building here.
No, I see what you did.
That's right.
Okay, let's look at this.
Yeah.
So what's this?
Those are interior courtyards to the buildings, so amenities would be there. I know, I know, it's confusing.
Label the building!
That's why we tried, we tried to break it down into sections. It, it, there is a lot going on here, but we'll, you know, we'll walk you through every piece.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just a little misleading to hear that the buildings moved back.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at D1 and D2, and I was assuming those were the buildings. Those were the buildings.
And honestly, we discussed it a lot. Forty-four feet is a very significant setback, so, you know, we wanted to maintain the street edge, but we, we heard you that, you know, we felt that it was important to break down sort of the, the, the massing, if you will, of this long, separating now these buildings. They now are separate and, and, you know, manipulating the sort of plane of the, of the parking garage. And again, working with the existing trees wherever we can. So right now, the existing sidewalk is, I think there's a four-foot sidewalk that's directly at the curb line of the street. This new sidewalk is a ten-foot sidewalk that's, you know, proposed to be significantly set back with landscaping from the new roadway. So it's pretty, it's a, it's a pretty wide expanse between street and, and building.
It was the, those same stakes that we saw before and thought were close, though those haven't moved.
But I think it was one of the dorms that was most concerning, so we're gonna get to that. That had been twenty-five feet, and that's the one that was seen at the balloon test.
That's right.
And that was the dorm itself. We didn't really evaluate the setback being forty-four and still is forty-four at the sidewalk.
That's correct. That's correct.
And to clarify, this, this building, D1, D2 with the parking garage, parking garage is still gonna be lower in height-
That's correct.
-because of those buildings, so there's gonna be-
Yeah, so there will be height variation as well. And then again, with the trees, new trees and existing trees, there should be, and again, these are things that we'll show you sort of in 3D and with, you know, actual pictures, uh, on August seventeenth, so we're working on that.
Can you scroll out one second? No, can you go back, or go back to, so I guess, can you just, uh, zoom out a little bit? Actually, yeah, uh, no, uh, further away, further away. So I wanna see the whole picture, sorry. So what I wanted to ask about was, or a little more, actually, just 'cause I wanna be able to see, so the buffer at the top, right?
Yes.
That's increased, correct?
That is increased, yes.
So kind of the, I guess, the interplay is that if we, if you increase the buffer at the top towards the neighborhood at the top, if you were to, if you were to move D1 and D2 away from the street, you would be decreasing that.
That's exactly right.
So that's the trade-off that we have to talk about.
Exactly right. So we wanted to be, again, we wanted, we were, we're trying to balance all of the different variables, and, um, we did look at a, a, at the option of moving essentially the whole plan back, but it did exactly what you talked about, which was to decrease the buffers closer to the neighborhood.
So, I mean, I'm not necessarily against that, a little bit, you know, depending on-
Right.
-playing with that, um, 'cause I still think it's pretty close to, to the 114. But I, but at least I understand that that's the, the trade-off that we have to talk about, is between the top buffer with, uh, Berkeley Road kinda area and then the, with the 114 and being kinda close.
Yeah.
So, okay, at least that's, at least we can recognize what the issue is and see what we can do about it.
Right. And we had a lot of debate internally with our team about, about this very thing. And, um, you know, again, when we have, when we have more imagery that we'll show you, we'll have, we'll have, uh, more of that discussion for you.
Okay.
So if we go back, we can go back to where we were. Yeah. So I think, yeah, so then this is, this is the net, the, the last quadrant of the site. So the, just a reminder of the original plan, uh, and again, maintaining this wide landscaped buffer at the Berkeley Road property line, uh, located the parking, surface parking between the student housing building and the property line to keep the buildings as far away from the abutting houses as possible. But we heard a lot about that, so I'll get to that.
What?
Uh, it maintained existing wetland areas, again, provided extensive drainage improvements, and focused the student housing building inward and toward campus, but we heard a lot about that too, so I'll, I'll get to that in the next slide.
So just a couple of things that we, I think we talked about. So that SHA building was like twenty-five feet from 114, right?
That's right.
And how far was that parking lot, the edge of that, the western edge of that parking lot?
So it was a hundred and seventy-seven feet. It's now a hundred and eighty-two, and we've added a lot of screening. Um, we've, we've totally reconfigured that parking lot.
So let's see what that is. I just wanted to know what, what it was before we go into what it is.
And this is the only surface parking, so everything else you saw in gray was structured parking. This is the only surface parking on the, on the property.
There's one other location of surface parking, but it's, it's pretty minor compared to this.
Okay.
So we can go to the next one. So, speaking of the parking, we totally redesigned that parking lot. It wasn't, um, it wasn't fully vetted, to be honest. We spent a lot of time just to make it function better, but also, you can see that the, that the, the vast majority of the parking is oriented away from the Berkeley Road neighbors, so when people park, headlights are not going towards them. But even with that, we've added a lot of, uh, screening, uh, landscaping throughout there. We do have to work within, um, with the, the, the drainage structures. This is a really critical spot for drainage on the site. There's an existing thirty-six-inch drainage pipe that, um, goes into the town's infrastructure at this location, so this is a really critical spot. Um, but we know that this is important to the neighbors, so we're gonna work with, uh, our engineering team and our designers to make sure that everybody's, uh, concerns are accommodated here.
Are these new trees or?
These are new trees, so the sort of-
In addition to the ones that were already, because there was a good amount of trees that were already there.
Exactly. So these are more like arborvit-y, like, kind of, like, more solid, but those existing trees are all gonna stay there.
Is there fencing there now, or is it just the trees?
It's just the trees. So again, you know, we're gonna find a fencing solution that works, that people will essentially be invisible, but, you know, provide that security for people. Um, we totally redesigned the student housing building in plan. So we heard that we needed to get that building further away from the three houses that abut, uh, Route 114. So we did that and, and tried to reorient the building again, as far away from those and the Berkeley Road neighbors as possible. Uh, we, uh, if you recall, there was sort of a reverse C sort of, uh, configuration of the building before, but with this, uh, more T and O configuration, it either focuses inward into itself or inward towards the town green. You know, we expect the building to have smaller windows on the back. Uh, they would barely open on the back, you know. All of the energy, the entrance and everything will be on the inner side of this building. It'll be security-controlled. Uh, we expect this to be a much, uh, much better place for the students than exists today, where the, the kids are spread all throughout the site with very little control.
What are the heights of these, Mike?
Uh, the light blue are four stories and the darker blue are five stories.
And are the distances shown from the turnpike street side to the tree line or to the building itself?
So there's one that's to, uh, the closest building itself. It was at a hundred and thirty-two feet, and now it's a hundred and fifty-one feet. And, uh, to the property line, it was ni, it was sixty-seven feet, and now it's ninety-six feet.
That's the property line.
Yeah. So I'm gonna go on to the next one. Uh, these are just some images. We wanted to, you know, give people an idea. These are our, um, uh, buildings. These, this is student housing, sort of mixed, mixed-use student housing that's in Columbus, Ohio, that our architect has, uh, designed and, um, very successful. So this is sort of the building typology that we're talking about.
Would, but these residences are not planned to be mixed-use, right? Are they? Like, I know, like, so the dorm, you know, that I lived in had, you know, all the, um, apartments, but then on the bottom floor, there's a convenience store and a, you know, Taco Bell or whatever. Would these have those kind of elements, or would these just be-
These will have that, that retail element.
Okay.
Yes. So, and it will open onto the green, so it'll be on the first floor, uh, so there won't be residences, right? On the first floor closest to 114 in the town green.
So of the seventy-four thousand in retail, approximately thirteen thousand three fifty are in the dorms.
That's right.
The first floor of the dorm areas.
That's right.
I wasn't aware of that. Okay, I'll look at it.
Good. And this is just another, you know, building type, a little bit more traditional. This is in Warwick, Rhode Island, but again, uh, very successful type, uh, type of building that our architect-
Greg Johnson, who else?
This is, uh, New England Institute of Technology.
Okay.
And then lastly, in the center of the site, the town green, um, you know, the, we, we retained the two-and-a-half-acre new town green, which is very important. Uh, we have the street-level retail focused inward to activate this new space, and the taller buildings were, uh, focused in this area and, and 114 away from the neighborhoods. The new plan does even more of that. So, um, again, uh, the taller buildings now only located in this area. We don't have any taller buildings over four stories, and in most cases, they're three stories, uh, in the sort of perimeter of the site. Um, we moved the parking garage from the rear of the hotel, uh, which we never really liked very much. We've replaced that with one level of underground parking and one level of at-grade parking, but with a landscaped deck and a pocket park to screen it. So it was important that, um, you know, that be a more-
Now, which one is that?
That is right behind the purple building B. So there was a four-story garage behind that, and we've put the one level underground to get rid of that and to make it more of a connecting element. Um, we further developed the town green, uh, town green landscape design, preserving the existing trees at the front of the site. So our, our landscape architect is working through the design of this. We know that this is a prime spot to preserve a lot of the existing trees, but to sort of frame the views from 114 into the site, so that's, uh, we're pretty excited about that, and, as are they. It's a, it's a really great, uh, a really great, uh, part of, um, of our design. Uh, we've increased the setback of the student housing building, um, so we've moved it back away from 114. We were feeling that the twenty-five feet, we had heard that the twenty-five feet was too close, uh, so we moved it back another six feet. Uh, it's also the skinniest part of that building, so it doesn't have a lot of frontage, but frames the town green. Uh, we introduced bike lanes and buffered landscape sidewalks to connect to the MassDOT improvements, and those extend into the site, uh, and again, connect to the walking path at the rear of the site. So we see that all as an integrated network. So if you don't want to drive, you don't have to drive, and we're pretty excited about that. And we coordinated the street design with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority and MassDOT to accommodate, uh, future public transit connections, which, um, which they're both very excited about, as are we. So we, we really wanna see that. Traffic's very important, we've talked about it a lot, but, uh, wherever we can, we're looking to, uh, provide alternatives for people to utilize. And we talked about the other setbacks, but happy to, uh, answer questions. Uh, we, we can just quickly run through the rest of the presentation. Um, again, just to remind people, if you go to the next, uh, next slide, Gene? So this is just to remind people sort of the types of architecture. Again, we heard loud and clear that it's important that, um, that what we're proposing here fits into North Andover. So we don't wanna make it, uh, we don't wanna make it look too traditional, we don't want it to make, we don't want it to look fake. We want it to look, uh, organic in that it belongs. But we do know that it needs to fit into North Andover. So our team is really working hard on that to make sure that these buildings really fit in. These are some of the inspirational images that we're working with right now. And I know we've, we've shown you some images of the hotel, which draw pretty heavily on this, but we're looking at, um, the other buildings as well. So we'll shoot, we're, we'll, we'll be able to show you that pretty soon.
So that's the, the top ones, that's the Hanover Inn?
Yes, yes.
And then the Hotel Viking, that's in Newport, right?
That's in Newport, Rhode Island, yeah.
I've stayed there, it's nice.
Yeah, it is. And then there's a couple others. There's one in Amherst, Massachusetts, and one in Williamstown, Massachusetts as well. And these are generally, in most cases, uh, sort of college-adjacent, uh, hotels as well. So, um, so really good models. So the last slide is just a summary of everything we talked about, so I'll kind of leave it at that, and we can answer any questions and, um, continue on.
Okay. Gene, thoughts on next steps and kind of immediate timeline?
I think, as you said at the beginning, we need to talk about the remaining elements. I know I shared with Mike a list of elements that I think, um, still need to come before you, other than this big-picture stuff. So the quicker we can get to seeing all this in a format spreadsheet-driven, where you really understand the meat of it, things like stormwater is somewhat advancing. Um, we've talked about some detail on roadway sidewalk design guidelines that, um, we've seen brief pictures of, but I think we have to make sure DPW is aware of those and, and kind of checks that off. Circulation plans, view angles, we've talked about that should be forthcoming. Parking ratios, we really haven't gotten into that.
Yes, yes.
So there's-
So there's a lot of the gritty stuff that we need to get through. Um, okay. So I think here's what I'd say, is that, why don't we, so our next meeting is July twentieth, but I'd say let's give it to that, August seventeenth. Let's meet with the working group. Let's start going through some of these real fine points and figuring out when we're gonna have them, and we don't have to have everything right away, but we need a timeline of when we're gonna have all these little details. Um, continue to work through the zoning and just continue to work with this kind of, um, design to kind of, um, push some of the aspects that we like. If there's things that, you know, maybe we feel may need changes, I think, you know, now is the time to say it-
Yeah.
-before we get too much further.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think those, I think the view angles are really important, 'cause a lot of people have been concerned about the building height. There are some five-story buildings still proposed, and, um, in order to start really getting into the, that's the bolts of the zoning, we need that nod. We need to say, is this, you know, what's the appetite of the board? Are you satisfied that the path they've taken to move forward to try to mitigate, you're somewhat comfortable with, that we can start actually writing the zoning?
Right. Okay, so that, so we got a good amount of work to do in the next, uh, month and a half to kind of get us in position that we could figure out if we're able to move forward.
Yeah. And we're able, yeah, I know that we've talked in the past about, um, uh, putting the new program to the fiscal impact analysis, for example, so resubmitting an addendum to that, as well as the traffic, which we've already done a portion of, but we're, we're prepared to do that as well, so that we can-
Yeah, so, I mean, that kind of stuff, I think, can come at the, you know, at the times we're doing public hearings.
Yeah.
We'll need that stuff. Uh, that's not as important as really nailing down, okay, this building's gonna be this height, this building's gonna have this many people, this is gonna, setback is gonna be this, this roadway is gonna be this. And having those, we can get that stuff later on, 'cause that's just plugging in the numbers.
Yeah.
I think we all need to get comfortable of what, you know, uh, what the actual proposal's gonna be that, that moves forward at the end.
Got it.
Yeah, I think what's, the big one is, what does it look like? Like, what does this really mean visually, um, is what I hear the most of, from the immediate neighborhood.
Because I know there's talk of this being a, a very sustainable community environmentally. Is there any, gonna be any use of, like, solar panels under, under of these, any of these buildings?
Yeah, so we've, uh, we've, we've looked very closely at sustainability. It's really important to us. Uh, solar, certainly will be solar-ready. So the buildings are gonna be designed very high-performance, so we're gonna start before we even get to sort of active power generation. We're gonna make sure that the buildings are utilizing as little energy to begin with as possible. Um, so, you know, highly insulated wall systems, probably all-electric, not the way that they are today, but with, uh, you know, high-efficiency called VRF systems, um, which is the most efficient, uh, sort of HVA system you could utilize. You know, highly, um, insulated windows and doors, you know, really high-performing buildings. We do have structures within the property that lend themselves to solar, but we gotta figure out, you know, what the right fit is, as far as active power generation. We've talked about a whole bunch of things. We've talked about some crazy things like, uh, it's called micro geo-grids and stuff like that. Um, but there's, there's a lot of things, we're looking very closely at, at, at anything that'll be the right fit here. What I can assure you of is that, um, they'll be the highest-performing buildings that you can, you can essentially build at the time, um, and something that we're totally committed to. Like, right now, the buildings are incredibly inefficient. totally committed to. Like, right now, the buildings are incredibly inefficient, but we see this. We've got a lot of experience. Both Trinity and Aimco have a lot of experience building large-scale, sustainable projects like this. We see this as a model. We want it to be a model for Massachusetts, not just for North Andover. We see this as something that could be really noteworthy. So, we've spent a lot of time on that.
Okay. I think that, Jean?
So, there are three abutter comments that have come in since the June 1st meeting. They're in the packet. I won't be choose to read them or not, but they are available, and the board has all of them in the packet.
Okay. What, do you know if they are pertinent to our discussion that we had tonight? I haven't read them in a little bit.
They're all pertinent, but I-
Well, no, I mean, just are they on topic for what we discussed tonight in terms of the revisions? Let me go back and look.
Not necessarily. So, they weren't aware revisions were coming?
Right, right, right. No, no, I'm not blaming them. I'm just saying that-
Yeah. So, I think the five-story buildings, I think, the balloon test, the five-story balloon, there appeared to be only one that, to be set back from 114, helpful in visualizing the height and existing proposed townhouse height. They appear essentially the same.
No, I think, I mean, they're all, I think they're all available, and we'll, you know, as we get into public hearings and stuff like that, we can kind of take that up.
Yeah. I think one of them just speaks to getting the visuals will really help them get a better sense.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So, both.
Adjourn? Great.
Second.
Second. Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
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 That came in during the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.